This is the meeting of the zoning board of appeals, April 5th, 2018. We have to do some, a little bit of board business before we start with the people that have filed for hearing notices here. So if you just give us a couple of minutes, we will take care of that. First item of business is, we have new board members, or two of us anyways, and the fifth one is missing, and we have to have a chairman for the board. Anybody here wants to be the chairman? Somebody has to nominate something.
I nominate Richard, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. I'll second that. Thanks. Home in favor?
No.
I have a letter here that I have to, that we received from the zoning board regarding a piece of property that I have to read into the record. Sent to the Deerfield Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Zoning Board, Deerfield Inspection Department. Ladies and gentlemen, enclosed, you will find the letter that we have sent to the Chief of Police in Deerfield regarding our declining situation at 711 and 707 Greenfield Road, Routes 5 and 10. You want to be aware of what's happening at our location. As we have stated to the chief, we believe the situation escalated beyond a simple border altercation. We have pursued legal counsel, and our lawyer, the Honorable Jack Curtis of Greenfield, has explained that these types of situations could linger on for years. We have reached out to the police chief, and now are reaching out to all you for help in resolving this situation. It is dangerous from a traffic safety standpoint, and our clientele are now being verbally confronted by an angry, aggressive Mr. Atherton. Help, please. Mr. Atherton submitted blueprints and site plans to the town of Deerfield for their approval. Today, his site does not look anything like his approved blueprints and site plans. Is there a form, a meeting, a council, a board that we can appeal to? We have Mr. Atherton's permits reviewed to at least have his site resemble his initial design. In all seriousness, we want in the long run his unhindered safe act, strict and egress from our businesses and our clients, Mr. Atherton. This board is not in a position, we can comment on it if anybody would like to, but we are not in a position to comment on that, this letter, because there is no appeal here, and this is, his letter will be referred to the building commissioner for his input. Anybody want to say anything here? Okay, that takes care of that. Now, we have three things on the hearing here for tonight. I, if, we'd like to take the ones that are quickest as possible, so we don't make everybody linger here for the lengthy ones. And if I just ask, how many people are here for Mr. Gory's thing? Just kind of a show of force here. Just one. Okay, how many people are here for Hugh Manheim? Three. I guess that means everybody else is here for Mr. Antis. And for, seeing there's only one or two people, we'll take the ones that have only one or two. That way we will have a lot of time to give, devote to the Mr. Antis project. I will read the first notice into the hearing. The zoning board appeals, town of Deerfield will hold a public hearing on April 5th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room at the Deerfield Municipal Office, 8 Conway Street, South Deerfield, on the application of Blake Gory of 37 South Main Street, South Deerfield. Mr. Gory is seeking a variance for alterations to pre-existing lot and structure on a non-conforming lot at 37 South Main Street, South Deerfield, map 168, Lot 34. And if you're representing Mr. Gory, if somebody would, going to do a presentation, step up to the plate here, please.
Basically, there's a existing structure that I'm looking to connect to the existing building that I work out of. I do have just a couple of...
Oh, I need to, I need to address one subject. Only four members showed up tonight. So when it comes down to a vote, you have to have four votes unanimously, or the appeal fails. You'll have the option up until the time that we're going to take a vote, to decide whether you want that or to continue to the next meeting and have five people present. So that's an option that everybody will have tonight. Do you have a map or something? Oh, here it is.
So you guys can't even decide on the matter tonight?
Yes, we can decide on it. But, yes, we can. One, two, three, four. You need all four votes. One person votes against.
So if you're feeling like you're not getting the support you think you're going to need?
I got it.
And it's a two-year, can't appeal for two years. Apply for two years if you fail.
And this is just one other, that one shows it too. This is, the Pan Am rail runs through here, and there's an existing building, which is the ACC, and then the 37 South Main Street, where basically, I would like to connect the two buildings to make it a manufacturing, well, that's what we do in this facility, and I'm, all I'm looking for is just to connect this space to, to gain more indoor manufacturing.
Okay. Questions, anybody, or?
How much more are you going to add on to what you got?
It's like 63 feet.
That's what's between the two buildings?
The actual addition would be off the existing, how do I say that? From the 37 building, it's a total of 65 feet by 50 feet. So basically, just connecting the two, on this one map, is, the 37 would connect to the ACC, if that makes sense to you.
So about 314 feet total?
Total with both buildings.
Yeah, okay. Same roof line?
Um, no. It's, uh, it, the existing structure, I don't know why that 250 is there. That's a, the way that the town has it on their mapping. I apologize for that. So the existing structure that's there is, is 55 feet in length from north to south. So in a sense, all I'm, all I'm doing is connecting, so it would be a total of, like, 130 feet for both buildings. And I guess, I can't stress that the buildings, there's already a building there, so all we're doing is connecting the two. The ridge line stays the same, the footprint stays the same, the roof pitch is going to change on the new addition, I guess, if you will, but the actual footprint is the exact same of what's there.
Now, that abuts back to the railroad tracks?
Yep. And then, just, because we're talking, the right-of-way that I have goes to the P&amp;M Railroad, but they have actually a right-of-way through there also, I guess, with that, from South Main Street. Besides that, that's all I...
The right-of-way is a strip between Lot 33 and 35?
Yep.
And how much you have left between the railroad track and the building?
Um, from the center rail, uh, from the existing building to the edge of my property line is probably 15, if not 20 feet. And then, the railroad's kind of funky. They have, they, the way they draw this out is from center rail that goes through, which is that, like, that, the new, the new high-speed rail, they call it now, is 33 feet from the center of that rail to that line that you're seeing, like, here, is their property line. And then over from there to that building, the existing building is like, probably 20 feet.
And is Lot 37 another access to that property?
There is, yep. That's also owned by Pan Am Railroad.
Lot 37 is Pan Am Railroad?
Nope. Lot 37 would be...
Jankowski.
Say that again?
Jankowski.
Yes, yep.
You know where that is? Any questions, anybody? Anything you want to add, more?
Not if there's anything that I didn't answer, I guess.
Anybody from the audience want to ask question?
His access, yes, the right-of-way, do you plan on using that right-of-way as a new access, or do you want to use me or what?
Yeah, the right-of-way that's there, that is the only right-of-way that I use, basically. It's the only...
The 1144 one, right?
Say that again?
1144, it's on the map here?
Yes. Yep.
So you don't, you don't need that space to turn a truck around or anything?
Nope. Nope, there's other, behind, so that 11, 11 dot 44 is the right-of-way, but as the easement goes around, there's enough room in front of that building for parking and, as, you know...
That's that .1680 acre piece?
Yep.
You're talking about, right?
Yep.
Okay. You said your building. What are the two buildings being used for now?
Manufacturing, I guess, in terms of, like, we do work for plastic companies in the area.
Fabrication?
Yep, fabrication. It would be a better word than manufacturing, because we don't, we don't just manufacture one item. We do fabrication or modifying existing products. Fabrication is a good word.
So, do you consider this just an expansion of your business?
I do. Basically, in roof coverage, something indoors is what, what we're moving for. I don't really have a, a direct plan on where, what we're doing 100%, but that's what we're going for, is, is more, more indoor.
Okay. Anybody? Frank?
I don't have any questions. Looks pretty straightforward.
Kathy?
I'm, I'm fine.
Bernie?
Fine.
Anybody else want to make any comments?
I guess I'm, like, sorry, just to, to make sure that everybody knows that he's not gaining any space on the blueprint of the two buildings, basically, he's just tying the two buildings together. So it's not getting bigger in length, it's not getting bigger in width. And he's not getting any close to the tracks, and any turning around to get around the building or any vehicle traffic is going to be the exact same pattern of what he, is what he has presently.
So it's no pass-through for vehicles or anything now?
No.
Thanks. Anything else? Well?
So, that's commercial, right? And you are a registered business in town?
Yep.
I have no problem at all with it. Encourage it.
Thank you. Are you motion to close the hearing? Or?
I propose a motion to, I second it.
Home in favor? I would deliberate. Okay.
No wishes from me.
Kathy?
I'm wearing the ropes here. So...
Ask any question you want.
It sounds fine. I did read a lot about how a substantial hardship needs to be shown to have a variance granted. So I'm just trying to understand if that's something that we have to take into consideration.
That is a consideration. The hardship, I would assume, the hardship is that he can't expand his business without expanding his space.
Right.
Which I think, in this particular case, is a little lenient, but that's the question. More questions? Want to go to a vote? Frank?
Yep. I, I vote yes.
Me too.
Yes. unanimous. I'm going to record who voted, the absent who was... Okay, the hearing we close. Thank you for your time.
Yep.
Uh, next one will be Mr. Manheim. The zoning board appeals, town of Deerfield will hold a public hearing on April 5th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room at the Deerfield Municipal Office, is 8 Conway Street, South Deerfield, on the application of Hugh Manheim of 311 River Road, South Deerfield, is seeking a variance at 39 Fair Street, South Deerfield, map 175, Lot 46, due to the structure's non-conforming use of a non-conforming lot that has been vacant over a period of over two years. It's gracefully making a variance a requirement. Mr. Manheim? No, Mr. Manheim. What does the board want to do with this? They want to table this?
Let's go to the next one.
Table it, have Mr. Manheim come to another meeting, the next hearing, he can reapply.
Can I ask a question?
Go right ahead.
I'm confused of, my name's Rocky Pauline, of the 16 South Main Street, I got a letter that is a, a potential of butter, but the number that's listed there, 37, that's the building that the BBA market is there?
That is correct.
Okay.
This house is, I'll explain what this is. This house, this lot is like, it's a little over two acres, or approximately two acres. It goes from the deli around the corner on Boran Avenue, and encompasses that house. The only thing that happened is, over the years, it fell out of its compliance because no two buildings on one lot. So, uh, this isn't that complicated, but it's, it's a little bit, but, uh, right now, you can't renovate that house without getting a variance from the board. His second choice, okay, if a variance would be denied, would be he can go to the planning board and subdivide that lot, because he has enough square footage and enough frontage to do that. Okay? So, how it got to be here is, uh, probably, he should have gone to the planning board, and asked the planning board to subdivide that lot. That would have been the process.
What I was confused about is, uh, the house directly across the street from it, that one's been abandoned for over two years, and that's the one I really had bought, the, so I was just confused.
The house across the street from the deli?
Yeah.
The one, the little one that sits back?
No, that's mine. He's talking about, um, 38, 40, 42, 44.
44.
It's been...
Yeah, it's the one written next to the book.
It's a little bit across from the deli, not directly across.
Yeah, so, okay, I was just confused about that.
This is the one on Boran Avenue.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Now I understand, but I was confused at which, whether it's the right number for the house at top.
They, they told me it's because you're within 300 feet of the address, 39, they're...
The butter of butters get notices.
Well, I asked why I got a notice, and I was told it was because I was a 300...
Radius and, and at least two of butters, the butter and that next to butter get notified.
Oh, that's...
Okay, that's why I got it, yeah, okay, thank you.
This is going to be, it's going to be, take no action, just come up, sorry, need a, motion to table this.
Motion to table it?
A second.
Home in favor?
All right.
Tabled.
Question?
I was just, so you're, so the gentleman will come back at another...
He's going to have to reapply.
Oh, you'll have to put in a new application?
Yeah, put in an application.
Okay.
Yeah, start all over.
I'll watch the, I'm going to stay for the next one, it sounds interesting.
Okay. Next one. The zoning board appeals, town of Deerfield will hold a public hearing on April 5th, 2018, at 7:00 PM in the main meeting room at the Deerfield Municipal Office, 8 Conway Street, South Deerfield, on the application of Max Antis of 67 Stillwater Road, South Deerfield. Mr. Antis is seeking a special permit to pasture, raise 10 pigs for farm sale each season at the same address, map 110, Lot 4. Mr. Antis, step right up to the hot seat.
Yes.
I need to read into record, because I didn't see that. We have comments from the building commissioner, I see no problem granting a special permit, it's a farm-by-right community. This one is from the planning board, and it just says, from John Wake, says, sounds fine. This one is from Conservation Commission, there's no comment. Uh, this one is from the Board of Assessors, there's no comment. So those are just requests for comments from, for the board. Go ahead, Max.
Um, I currently raise beef, and pigs have been requested by different beef customers, so I was trying to fill a need. People want locally raised animals that they know are treated well and fed. I'm in the process of going organic, so I'm not there yet, but try to give them good feed and treat them well, and it's what people want, or some people want.
Any questions for Max? Max, you want to tell us how many acres you have?
Right there at 67, I got 10 acres.
10 acres?
10 acres, yeah.
I need to, I need to make this comment, because I probably should have brought this up before, but, um, there's going to be another hearing, should this be granted here, there'll be another hearing before the Board of Selectmen, Board of Health, for site plan assignment and for conditions applied to the permit, okay? Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section, I don't want to be quoted wrong, man, General Law's Chapter 40 say that you cannot force a person who is in a right-to-farm district to get a special permit, but it also states in the other Board of Health regulations that pigeries require site assignments that come from the Board of Health. So, the vote here, uh, bas- basically is almost meaningless, and we can hear comments, but I'm just going to tell anybody who wants to comment, that they're going to have to go to the hearing that the selectmen hold and the Board of Health hold. You want to say anything else, Max?
Yeah, these regulations, I believe, are unique to Deerfield.
Does. Deerfield had put this special permit on the bylaws several years ago, but our town attorney frowns on it because we also have the right-to-farm bylaw added after that, plus the fact that the site assignment and regulations come out of the Board of Health. That's by general law, okay? So, anybody would like, else would like to comment?
I'm Janice, we're, I live on Stillwater Road, and please don't take this personally, Mr. Antis, but we have had battle royal with, um, the, with the Romanowskis farm and their And I think it takes a special person to take care of pigs the way they ought to be taken care of. And, um, I don't know if this board has gone to Mr. Antis' place to see where he plans to have the pigs and what, because it can be, I think basically that it's just not an area for pigs in a residential area. So that's my opinion. And it's been, it's been with, I hope you understand why we are, why I am very skeptical about having anybody having more pigs on that road, because it's just, um, the, sometimes the stench, the cleanup, the things that happen to that land that are coming in, I don't assume that you're that type of farmer, I hope I'm, I just can't compare you with the others, but I just cannot see having more pigs on that road.
Anyone else like to make comment?
I've got a question, just a general, just a general question. From the time that this other farm was approved, to, to now, have things changed regarding to what was just questioned on how they're kept?
The, the other farm has been there for more than 50 years.
Right.
Pre-date zoning, okay? So, that's the only, and there is...
But this land is registered as a new farm, correct?
The, the zoning for Stillwater Road is residential agriculture. We have no specific agricultural, so it's allowed. So, I, I'm not at liberty to make any comments about down the road at this point. I can only tell you that he has not very many pigs left.
But it's not only the pigs, there's other populations.
Yeah, this isn't, I can't, I can't make any comments.
Right. Where would those pigs be housed?
Max?
And is this part of your livelihood, Mr. Antis?
Uh, no, this isn't part of my livelihood. It's, agriculture's mostly a way for me to spend time with my kids and have something to do that I can relate to, because like, there were, it's just a choice I'm making. And these pigs will be housed behind the house, you won't see them from the road, they're going to be, I'm going to buy, if I get approved, I'll buy some the end of the month, and they'll go till December, and then they go to the slaughterhouse, so. They're on open land with...
So they're going to be on a horse, like, every seven months? Seven?
They'll be a batch every year. I'll buy 10, or I'll, right now, I'm planning to buy four, and then I'll put them on pasture, and they'll run around and gain weight, and before they get too big, you send them to the slaughterhouse.
So is 10 the only pigs you get at any one time?
Yes.
And are they going to be, um, the sow or the boar, or what?
No, no, these are just, they call them feeders, you're not breeding pigs. You're just buying them, and you grow them, you know, you bring them from 30 pounds to 200 pounds, and then off to the slaughterhouse they go.
What kind of fencing are you...
Oh, I have a combination of hog panels, which is a welded wire, and electric fence inside the hog panel, so it's like a double row of protection, so. Pigs used to get out when I was young, and it's no fun watching, or it's no fun chasing them, and it's no fun fixing the damage they can do, they're pretty destructive.
Yes.
Uh, yes, lady behind you, Max.
Hi.
I'm like a mighty here. I have lived on Stillwater Road for 25, 30 years.
Okay.
And I'm sure all of you gentlemen, and the lady there, are familiar with Romanowski. And it's been brought up, I don't know how many times. We have taken them to court, we have done everything that we can think of to improve what's over there, and nothing has ever worked. So, if it hasn't worked in 25 or 30 years, I don't know what's going to happen now. How can, how do you...
I'm, I'm hoping to give pigs a better name.
If you drive up Stillwater... He's hoping to give pigs a better name. You probably will, but it's not only just the pigs. If you, any of you drive up Stillwater Road, oh, mine has been, and I don't know how many acres he owns there, Romanowski.
many acres he owns there, Romanowski, there is everything in there.
And just whole, yeah, that's why we're suspicious and we're a little leery here.
I understand.
Old eighteen-wheelers, tractors, trucks, you name it, it's all planted there. And it's nothing but, and you see in his driveway, the garbage in there? Anybody ever go up Stillwater Road? So I just up there.
But this is a slippery slope, slope ramp. Let me make a comment. You might not like what he's got, but I might not like what you have, and I think we have to be careful of when we start judging people about what they have, because we can get into a situation now where I don't like the kind of flowers you have, or I don't like the way you do things. And I get a little concerned when we start looking at our neighbors. He, he's a fireman, he was there when you people moved there, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so you know what you're getting yourself into. My, I live on a farm, my next door neighbor has cows, I can smell the cow odor, but you know what? If you want to live in a community that has farms, which people want, you're going to have to put up with things you're not comfortable with. You know, if we want a housing development, we can have that too, and if we keep pushing the farmers out, that's what you're going to have. And people who move here, move here because they want the serenity of our community and don't want housing projects, but as you look around, we're losing our farms left and right because we can't afford to keep these farms. And, you know, he's got the right to farm, and that's what we passed the law for, to protect the farmers.
Right.
Um, you know, and you have people that just don't do the things you want, but yet, this still is a free country, and if we start impinging upon everyone's freedom of doing things, then we have a problem. And who's the next person to complain about whatever, and that's what happens.
Do they still have to take so much care? Romanowski?
Um, I was there recently, and he has either four or six pigs left, that's it. It's all he's got left.
Is that the remit?
He's, I really don't want to discuss him, but I can tell you that he, he, well, I'll give you this comment, he used to have a permit to raise three hundred pigs, he's let that expire. He is down to something less than a dozen, okay?
Actually, I don't call that a farm, I call it a dump site, but you're right, I, I don't like to interfere with, this is a rural agriculture, it's just that sometimes it's, there's, there has to be some sensibility about letting land and your neighborhood fall down and, and, you know, when those homes were built in eighty-seven and eighty-eight, it wasn't half as bad as it is now, so there's got to be some sensibility to be that it's not a farm. If Mr. Antis takes care of things, he's been in farming before, and he, he's had farming, he grew up on a farm, am I right, Max?
Um, I grew up where I'm at, and we, we always had-
Yeah.
-some kind of animal around, so.
That, to me, is a farmer, but I just kind of, that's how I feel anyway.
I think that lady over here that owns the, wanted to speak.
That's me here?
The mushroom farmer, lady.
Yes. I, I'm Julia, I own seventy-five Stillwater Road, I'm a primary of butter of Mr. Antis, we share about four hundred feet of property boundary. I can, and also have a lifetime in agriculture and exposure to various livestock operations. I can attest to the care and intention that Mr. Antis puts into his livestock operation, and I am impressed with the minimal impacts that I've been exposed to on site, even in the heat of summer. Rarely do we experience any odor. I, I feel like he takes good care of his animals and is a responsible farmer. I'd really like to see him have the opportunity to diversify his operation and continue farming on that site. I, I haven't seen any issues with runoff, any escape, or any problems on the site at all, and on top-
I don't believe it.
On top of that, Max is a good neighbor and would help any of us on the road, and the, I feel like the Romanowski neighborhood, neighbor, the comments have nothing to do with pigs, and it's just more of a personal issue, and that really shouldn't be considered in the debate over Max's proposal to raise pigs on his property.
Now, somewhere somebody told me that you were going to accept the manure from the pigs, does that have any validity to it?
I am in the process with registering with the state to become a registered compost site. I've recently obtained a certified organic title for my dog, and I'm working on registering to be a state-recognized compost site for processing my byproducts. The fortunate part of the equation is my byproducts tend to be high in carbon, and the byproducts of livestock management tend to be high in nitrogen, and they combined can make a very perfect compost material.
Can you explain to the audience a little bit about compost and the manure smell versus it dropping in the field, to dropping it in a compost pile? I'd just like to address that a little bit.
Mismanaged manure is really what gives livestock management a bad name. Proper composting and working with balancing the carbon-nitrogen ratio and proper microbial aerobic digestion of said material really mitigates any faddle smell that you would associate with manure operations. And even the manure that Max has delivered to me for use on my property, even the, just the fresh manure has been surprisingly lacking odorless, my dog's not even interested, and that says a lot, so. But the proper composting process where you mix the carbon waste with the manure waste, the microbes are able to break it down, so it's biologically hazardous, and as well also, it really doesn't have enough-
Listen to all this, Max?
She went to school for all that, I did.
Too much school.
Do we have any more comments from any of the audience?
I just have one more question.
Go ahead.
It's just ten pigs at a time that you're going to have on his property, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And I basically have no more objection to Mr. Antis.
Then if there's no more comments, I'm going to close the hearing for deliberation here. And again, we're bound by Chapter forty-eight to allow the pigery, and it gets referred, and somebody sitting in the audience can correct me if I'm wrong, if you happen to be a Board of Health member, that it goes to the Board of Health for site plan review, for fencing, manure management, shelter, water, all comes under jurisdiction of the Board of Health. So there will be another hearing at the Board of Health, so, I want to tell them if they change their mind, Max, they can go to that hearing. There will be another, another health meeting. And I don't know, Kip, if you want to make any comments about it?
I don't at this time, except that you should have anybody who wants to speak, including myself, go to the microphones, otherwise you're going to hear about it, because people can't hear.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So, your turn, Kathy. What do you think?
Well, I, I think you should, we should allow him to do it for sure.
Right. For it.
Yeah.
So it's unanimous, you go to the Board of Health for your site assignment. That's it. You have, talk to Wendy, Town Administrator, have them pretend the Board of Health agenda for site assignment.
Okay. Thank you.
I see Mr. Mannheim has showed up.
Mr. Carr.
Does the board want to reconsider Mr. Mannheim tonight?
Yes.
We can do, yeah.
I, I think, I think that I really have questions to the board, as to-
Well, come right up here to the microphone, because we already tabled you because you weren't here.
Once, I apologize for being a distracted farmer, but there's nothing more important than me being here today, there's no excuses, I-
No, don't worry about it, just tell us what you want to tell us.
Okay, so, we're, we're a little bit confused as to which way to turn, so we were cited for having a abandoned house on a non-conforming lot over at thirty-nine Thayer Street. The house has been there since the nineteen, nineteen-hundred, and we would like to, or I would like to fix the house so that I could move into it, and then repair the house that I have in wait only. So, this being said, there is two hundred and five feet of road frontage on Thayer Street, and it was suggested that what we ought to do is take the Polish deli, where the Polish deli is, out of the equation, and that would give you enough road frontage to, to have the other lot be conforming. Whereas it would be, it would work if it was deemed as a one-family house, which I'm not sure if that's what, the way you guys would, would, would-
I explained to the people here before you got here, when I was reading that, that you have enough acreage and enough frontage to create that into a, subdivide it into a second lot, so both the deli and the house become conforming lots that are separated from each other.
Right.
That's a planning board scenario.
Right.
I'm, I'm a little fuzzy on this variance, because I suppose we can, we could grant a variance, but then you'd still be stuck with both houses on the same lot, that in the future, if you wanted to sell one of the pieces off, you'd have to subdivide it with the planning board.
Right.
And, Kip, I'd really like you to comment about that. I, what would be the preference of-
So the, the other-
A planning board member.
Okay, so, so the other, the other, the other idea was to turn Thayer, Boren Avenue into a road, and then the, then you would have more, you would have frontage from Boren Avenue?
Uh, that's another whole issue, requires a town meeting vote.
Uh-huh.
Yeah.
You know, it's not my place to tell them what to do, but my suggestion would be to subdivide the property at this time, and then there wouldn't have to be the variance, because it would be more difficult after the fact to do this.
Right. So it, as you, would you call the, the Polish deli a one-family house? I mean, there's one family that's living upstairs, and then there's the Polish deli.
That district allows one or two family, the deli is grandfathered in there by right because it's been there for sixty, seventy years.
Right. But, so as one family is X amount of frontage, and two-family is more frontage?
Yeah. You'd have to do two fam, I would assume you'd have to do two-family and the square footage for a two-family, because if the deli ever went away completely and you wanted to convert that to an apartment, then you'd be back here again for, for that.
I think, I think I'll be back here anyways, if it's two-family, I don't believe we have enough road frontage to-
Okay.
-to make the-
So then, then your option right now is to-
Boren Avenue.
Uh, it's complicated.
Or the, or a variance.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, you couldn't, you couldn't, it would take a town meeting vote to make it a street if that's the case, that's what he's looking for.
Yeah, that's-
Well, I'm, I'm looking for the path of least resistance at this point.
Sure.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but I'm getting confused, who are you, sir?
Oh, I'm sorry, my name's Hugh Man-
I'm the gentleman.
I am the gentleman.
I'm the dog. I am the gentleman. I'm glad to see you again, but I wanted to know the gentleman, the red jacket-
My name is Kip Camosa, I'm one of the selectmen and a planning board member in town.
Okay, and you're associated with the Board of Health?
Yes, the Board, the selectman is the Board of Health.
I'm fairly new here, and I just wanted to know who, who was speaking. I came tonight, I'm sorry, I still don't know your name, Mr.?
Mannheim.
Mannheim, I'll learn eventually. I was just one, I didn't know exactly what was going on with the property, I just wanted to kind of make, make an opinion voice, that I really love the way the houses and the trees kind of make a little paradise on that end of the street, to me. I'm new in Deerfield, I walk out, I know I see trees on all three sides, and, and then I live in a little village, and I just love it. So I, I was kind of keen to find out what you were planning to do with the property. I don't have any objection to, to the house in the back, that I expect to be glad to have as a neighbor. But I was wondering if you were, you know, going to develop or do anything with, with where the deli is and the land next to the deli and that kind of thing.
Well, I was planning to clean it up, but other than that, no.
What, I don't know.
Well, there's, there's, there's years of brush and growth and-
Over by the creek, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, I've seen where you, where you started.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was more concerned about the pine trees on the other side.
Yeah, of course.
You'll be one of them.
We're, we're, there are no plans to take the trees down.
Thank you. It, it really does make my home just a beautiful spot, so I just wanted to find out what's going on.
Yeah, I just want to fix the house.
And I think it's a great idea.
Anybody else would like to speak?
I didn't think I have any history, um, straight in town, if it wasn't enough language, is that correct?
I have no idea about Boren Avenue, you'd have to, you'd have to contact the Board of Selectmen so they could review the road scenarios.
Is that, is it a private road?
I, I'm under the assumption it's a private way.
Private, partial, right.
That's what I, I'm under the assumption, so.
It's always been, as far as we knew, in the neighborhood.
I-
Owned by the, what, cemetery?
I don't think that that road can be used for road frontage, but that's a planning board issue, okay? But he has frontage on Thayer Street that will accommodate the house on Boren Avenue. I, I understand there's two ways to subdivide it, this way or that way.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. Is there any ideas to subdivide both the parcel? Because it's all on the block right now.
Yes.
Everybody speak into the microphone.
It, it, it's one, Thayer Street is, is, thirty-ninth Thayer Street is one lot, as we speak, and so if you were to, to call it a one-family house, yet we have enough frontage to subdivide it so that the Polish deli would be taken out. If you call it a two-family house, then I believe that you need more road frontage, and that would leave us a few yards short.
Twenty-five feet more.
Twenty-five feet more, which would, so I think there's, it was two hundred and five feet, or two hundred and ten?
You only have enough room to subdivide for one family each.
Right.
And you only have one family, so, at this point.
So it should, so it would be okay?
So if you want to convert the house to two-family, you're going to have to go back, you have to come back to here for a multi-family permit.
Okay.
It's not a variance, it's a permit. Any more questions?
I'm confused, yes.
Yeah, you're going to-
If, if, at your time, dividing the property into two lots?
Yes.
And if Thayer Street is the front, you'd have to go right down the middle, right there?
Well, I think you just leave the whole thing the way it is, the way it is now, and it just is, you know, a dotted line, it says this is one lot and this is another lot.
One lot, one lot.
Yeah.
Wouldn't the red house in the back, you want to work on, be on this side, though, on the deli side?
No, you'd, you'd split it between the deli and the, and the road, so that would be your access, and, and then you would, you would, in the back of the deli, you would draw a line, and then the rest of it would be the-
So you're going to do it this way? Oh, but it would still be, because of that little, I never knew that was actually a driveway that went all the way back to that house, so you're talking about having two separate addresses, both on Thayer Street?
Yes.
So it would be like having an access road?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Now I understand what you're talking about.
So are you saying that the road that goes around, driveway that goes around to back thirty-ninth Thayer Street, and it goes around the barn, and it goes onto Boron Avenue? Is that how you're feeling you're going to, like, subdivide property? And or a totally misunderstanding?
Um, maybe a little, um, I...
So you want the roundabout?
Yes.
Or if you take it from Boron Avenue and go around?
So, so the...
You're going between the barn and, and the little house, and then you're going around back?
So the, the best, maybe the best way to say this is, is that you would, um, starting at the, where the driveway is where you're talking about coming up into, in from Thayer Street?
Mm-hmm.
Where the, where the beginning of the property is?
Mm-hmm.
You'd go over a hundred feet, and then you would draw a line, line going towards, back towards the house? And then you would take another right and draw another line to the right, and that would be the Polish deli. So it would be on a, on the, on a, a small lot, and then the other...
We have a map here if you'd like to take a look at it.
I know how it goes. This is what you're asking.
I think they're trying to find out where the access is going to be all the way.
Oh, well, I...
Are you going to keep the access in the same place?
Yeah, we'd keep the access in the same place.
So you use the access from Thayer Street?
Probably use the access from Boron Avenue.
Oh, right, so you won't, you won't have the driveway?
Because you'd still own, well, the Boron Avenue would really be kind of the driveway.
It was part of your property.
Yes.
But it's not, it's not a legal road?
It's not a legal road.
It's a private road.
Yes.
You use the access to that house as well as, um, the cemetery.
Yes.
Well, I have a question. Who owns Boron Avenue?
I do.
So they, people...
You own to the center of the road, right?
The center of the road.
No, sir. I own the whole road.
The whole road, all over the blacktop, the whole thing?
Yes. And, and about ten feet past the road.
Onto the other neighbor's front yard?
Yeah, the, the neighbor has a fence that's on the, that's near the line, next to the line. So there's, there's two trees on the other side of the road that... I'm being asked to, uh, take down.
See, Boron Avenue is not on here.
Because it's part of the parcel, maybe that's why it's not on there.
It's not a legal road. Why? There are two other houses on it.
That, that's from years ago.
Two years ago.
You're talking for, for modern day zones? So there, every, there's a cemetery in those two houses. They all have legal, uh, right of...
Well, they may not be legal, but they're what they call, um, adversary possession, which means they've been used for a certain amount of time, which allows the people to keep using it.
So it really won't interfere with a lot of...
Then it gets to be a sticky issue. If some, he puts a gate up and says, "I don't want you going through there," so it's...
Then it would be an issue.
Yeah, it could, it could be an issue. I'm not a lawyer, but that's what can happen.
Well, the cemetery, that's the only way. No, I think there is another, another entrance to the cemetery.
The cemetery hasn't existed. I believe that the cemetery hasn't existed.
I was just wondering, my, my kids go up and down that road all the time.
It's the cemetery.
My little boy, grandson bikes in there.
I'm not planning to cross the road. We could put up a toll.
I've noticed these meetings discover a lot of things besides just...
Don't need a TV.
It's interesting.
Well, from looking at the map, it doesn't, what you've said about owning the property appears to be correct. And Boron Avenue, obviously, according to this map, which is an accessory's map, it appears that Boron Avenue doesn't exist.
Uh.
Interesting. Any more questions? Then we'll close the hearing for deliberation and talk amongst ourselves. But, um, anybody got comments?
So are we voting on whether or not he's still contemplating going to planning board?
We're going to discuss what to do.
Yeah.
And then...
Yeah. Yeah.
I, I think the simplest process is to let him have variance to reconstruct the house. Then if he wants to go to the planning, then subdivide the lot. He can do that, otherwise it just stays on one lot.
Yeah, right.
Just reconstruct the house is there.
Yeah.
I agree.
Be unreasonable to tell him to tear it down.
Right.
Sorry.
That's getting pretty confusing of us in here.
Okay. So... Do you have a motion?
I make a motion if we, um, allow him to...
Fix the house?
Fix the house, to renovate the house.
Second it.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Kathy?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
I, I think this is not, a variance is so described. This is overturning the building inspector's decision to not allow you to renovate the house.
Okay.
Okay? That's what this is. This is kind of misworded here, okay? And the recommendation of this board is that you, in the future, if you want to do anything, you go to the planning board and discuss subdividing with them.
Okay.
Yeah. But by your documentation you presented, it appears that your, everything's in order, and we're just simply overturning the building inspector's decision not to grant you a permit to renovate the house.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much.
Dick, what is the, oh, what is the frontage requirement in the Center Village District? Is it eighty feet or a hundred?
Hundred.
He was right that on the accessory's map, he owns all of that, uh, Boron Ave. He owns all the, all the way to the property of the...
It appears by the map, he owns Boron Ave.
Yep.
I mean, everybody has prescriptive rights for driving through there.
Yep.
But it's, and I don't know who paved it. Been paved forever.
I assume so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, we have...
I guess we did all the yes.
Now we have Mr. Brian Atherton on the agenda here.
No, maybe this was the intended sheet. I don't know. I'm going to put everybody down, I guess.
Good evening.
Could Mr. Atherton explain why he's here?
So, um, now that we're kind of operational up there at our address there, seven oh seven Greenfield Road, uh, we applied to get a class-two license so that we can sell RVs at our location. This past year, the ZBA board, during our planning process and all that good stuff, we had it approved for twelve, uh, parking spots for us to sell out of. So when I went for the licensing, um, I do have a license. And it says that license not, uh, license restricted to not more than twelve trailers, and it has our address. The issue I've come across is when we initially put the request for the permit, language had to be changed. And for us to at least get a license to initially start with, and then to be able to come back here and get clarification. The issue that I'm having is, and it was brought up by an individual working for the town, was with this license with a class-two, class-two, I know Frank is probably aware of what class-two is, is for used car license for a dealer to sell. Our focus is RVs, anything related to recreational vehicles, so that could be a motorhome, that could be a trailer. It's kind of a tough situation because there's no RV dealer licensing in Massachusetts. Everything class-one, class-two is automotive vehicle, so it's kind of tough. So we fit in with the class-two the best. So what we're looking at doing is, if you come into our shop and you want to trade in a car for a trailer, we can't accept you right now. If you bring me a motorhome for consignment, or I want to go sell a motorhome, I can't do that. Because the way this is worded is trailers. Did some little more digging. Other people have expressed some of their input as well, stating that, um, a class-two license is for motorized vehicles regardless, and can't be restricted to just trailers. I don't know. Our goal is to meet our customer need. I did have, um, the RV show recently at the Big E. Um, I've also had some other people in the industry approach me, wanting us to outfit, like, those Mercedes Sprinter vans, because we also can outfit their vehicles to be like a concession stand-type vehicle. In those cases, we would need to purchase a brand-new vehicle from a dealer, um, to be able to outfit those vehicles. Right now, I couldn't do that with this license because of the restriction of the trailers. So what I'm requesting is that we can get that, um, approved, to get that changed to the word "vehicle" so that I can indeed meet my customer needs. But in order to do that, I was told to come back here to get clarified with ZBA and have you folks, um, look at what we had already approved or to approve that we can move forward with that.
Okay. That being said, I, I was at the hearings. Mr. Atherton attended. The zoning board previously allowed ten RVs, was supposed to be the statement. The class-two license is required for anything that has a VIN number. And somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. So a trailer falls under the class-two license, motorhome falls under the class-two license. I believe that your request was for RVs, okay?
Yep.
I know that at that time, that you were granted up to twelve RV-type vehicles by the zoning board.
Correct.
It was the Board of Selectmen that reduced your number to ten, correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
You...
We originally, I believe, asked for twelve, fifteen parking spots. Twelve is what I believe is what was correct, because we had asked for more and it got reduced.
Okay.
By three.
I'm wrong about the ten. Yes, Mr. Camosa. Step right up here.
I'd like to add to what Richard said, is that I also was at all of the ZBA hearings, and that, uh, this gentleman did request, uh, to sell trailers.
Yep.
And part of the process of selling motor vehicles, there's different laws and regulations to deal with the type of construction, the building, uh, oil-water separators and these types of things that go along with that. And none of that was addressed. So when he came to the Board of Selectmen for his class-two license, we issued him a class-two license but restricted to no motor vehicles because he didn't go through the proper channels. The Board of Selectmen would be happy to issue a license where he could sell, sell motor vehicles if he came before this board and said what he wanted to do with the plan. Then he'd have to go back to the planning board for site plan review for, you know, all of the necessary equipment to go along with having a garage to repair the vehicles.
Now, what I had spoken with, we're not doing any engine repair. We're only doing the resale aspect. So again, our focus is only the body.
I've got to say, yeah, that's, I'm, I'm not raising, I don't want to go back to the pig farm, but I just happen to have ten pigs, and they all had a litter of ten, and now I have a, now I have over a hundred pigs. But I really only have ten pigs.
Yeah.
Okay? Once you're issued the permit, and I think I got a guy here that can represent that pretty well.
Yeah.
Once you issue the permit to do whatever on motor vehicle repair, you become liable for waste oil?
Mm-hmm.
Antifreeze? Uh, all kinds of hazardous materials protections that need to be regulated and enforced.
I understand that, but we're not requesting anything to relate to automotive repair.
Well...
We are only asking for the sales of automotive. So your, our focus in the repair shop has and always will be related to the repair of the autom, uh, the, excuse me, the RV aspect of the vehicle. Has nothing to do with mechanical. If there's going to be any kind of mechanical, there's going to be a repair shop involved with it. Uh, not us. When it comes to the RV, respect, yes, it would.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, either one of you. You're here for clarification for the vehicles you can have, whether they're trailers, RVs, or motor vehicles. Is that correct?
Well, I just want to be able to resell an RV or take a vehicle in for trade and be able to sell it, not repair it in the mechanical sense.
Well, the class-two license that was issued by the town restricts it to just trailers, or you could call it an RV, but it has to be not with a motor.
So that's what you're restricting?
Correct.
So that prevents me from doing business in town related to being able to purchase a vehicle and outfitting it for a customer.
That's not true. You can apply for the proper, you can go through proper channels and come and get a license, so you can do that.
That's what I'm trying to do.
And bring that proposal to the board, and that's what you'd have to do.
I believe you got to bring that to the planning board.
The planning board as well.
Okay, that's what I'm trying to do, and I was directed to come to this.
I think you need to clarify that. I think that's what you're here for, clarification.
Correct.
I think that needs to go to the planning board. And I think the vehicles that would be addressed would be something like, I want to have, I'm just going to use this for numbers, I want to have ten RVs. It could be a motorhome or a trailer. And I want to have two vehicles that could be taken on a trade, whether a truck or a tractor or a car.
Right, yeah, that's what we discussed.
And I think that needs to be clarified one hundred percent.
Yeah.
So that's my assumption.
That was what was in the original, uh, documentation for this license. Then, in order for, uh, Kip and the rest of the team there to approve it, we had to remove that language so that at least I had something in writing in the hopes that I was able to put some orders in, which they denied because of the fact that it's not a true license in their eyes, because it's not a full, uh, class-two license.
We can't address that. We can only address the vehicle issue and...
No, I understand that.
Now, I, I don't know the answer. I'm going to ask Frank. Do, do these RVs and stuff require inspection stickers and inspections and stuff?
Um, yes.
Absolutely.
You planning on doing that?
I, anything like that would be, have to be related to, um, I come from the automotive field as well. When you sell a vehicle, whoever purchases the vehicle has seven days to take it to an inspection center and to, uh, you know, process that. But again, we're not looking for the repair side of it. So if something's on consignment, that's between, we're just facilitating, uh, between the owner of that vehicle and the said purchaser. But yeah, they would have to have that vehicle absolutely inspected, but we're not responsible for the mechanical side. And if there was to be some scenario like that, that's when an actual repair shop would be involved, not us.
Well, I was just going to mention, that's where you could get into trouble. If you take in a vehicle on trade and your intentions are to sell it, and it won't pass inspection, yours, you'll have to do something.
Oh, yeah, you'd have to take care of the repairs. In our case, we would have to take it to a shop.
So you'd have to farm that out.
Correct. Because we're not installing the oil-water separator. It's not our focus of business.
I believe that what, at least I, as a member of the, um, select board, read the requirements of having a class-two motor vehicle, and you have to have a facility capable of repairing motor vehicles.
But that is also, this particular license is geared towards only automotive itself, not the RV industry, and that's where the problem comes about.
I, I think, and please, somebody jump in. I think what we're talking about is something that's beyond the purview of the zoning board. I think the purview of the zoning board only refers back to the planning board. The zoning board is allowing twelve RVs or trailers, twelve units, we'll call it, okay? You need to clarify those twelve units with the planning board by virtue of what you need for oil-water separator repair site. And also has to be coordinated through the Board of Selectmen. So, uh, the only thing we can do is confirm that you asked for twelve, you got twelve. I, and you need to go to the planning board to, for site plan approval for the gas-powered, propane-powered vehicles of that nature.
In, in the zoning bylaws, if you wanted to sell, um, motorized vehicles, he would need a special permit from the ZBA to, to sell the motor vehicles.
Yeah, I think he's got to go back, got to go back to the planning board first.
So the guy down the road that's selling used cars has a facility to repair vehicles, is what you're telling me?
Excuse me?
Yes.
Okay.
As far as I know, I asked the selectman.
I'm, I'm not sure what he's talking about.
When I, I've never stopped in there to see myself, but, you know, I've seen places that sell cars that do not have an actual repair facility.
We're not deciding on whether you sell cars or not.
No, I know, but you know what I'm saying is, is, I'm in the same basis. I'm only looking to sell. I'm not looking for repair. You can outsource those repairs. I've seen it before many different businesses, other towns. I know this is Deerfield, it's a different... I know this is Deerfield, it's a different town, but in the same case, if there's going to be mechanical, it's being outsourced, not in-sourced. And so, I need to, instead of bouncing around the town like I did last year when we purchased this property, I'm trying to eliminate the bouncing around, and let's try to, you know what my goal is? If we can put stuff in processes, I was sent from the licensing board to this meeting. I just want to put the footwork where it needs to be.
Let me, if the Board of Selectmen is the licensing board and we did not tell you to come here?
Actually, you did.
We did?
Yes, you did, last meeting.
At our licensing?
Where this was approved, yes, you did.
If there was a recommendation from the Board of Selectmen to send you back here, it was to comply with the zoning bylaws, to say if you want to sell motor vehicles-
Correct.
-you had to come back to the zoning board of appeals for that.
Yeah, part of the discussion-
And that's a public hearing, I believe.
Well, we have no application. Came back here for a clarification only.
Yeah, that's not what he means.
So, the only thing we do is clarify that, yes, he has twelve units, whatever was specified, okay? If he wants to do anything with those twelve units beyond that, either he's got to file a new application-
Correct.
And that would have to first go to the, and I'm, you research as more than me, would have to first go to the planning board, then to come back here, like you said, for the motor vehicle permit.
I think that's always been a convention of mine anyways, is, you know, I don't, I don't like that our town, you know, one, one board does the other thing. I think each board should be able to act independently. So, if he should return to this board with an application to sell motor vehicles, you can do your thing. And you, your decision, if it was going to be positive, would be contingent upon, you know, site plan review from the planning board. And then, as a Board of Selectmen, we would take, you know, whether or not, you know, your input was positive or negative, then take the, the planning boards, and that's where we would make our decision. But I don't necessarily think that he has to go to the planning board first, but he has to file a proper application before this board.
I'm just trying to avoid the runaround I had last year. And Ms. Ness had pointed me towards this direction, as well as other members of that meeting, that clarification needed to be met because there was a question of whether they could approve it as the documents had been initially written. Like I say, we had to strike the aspect of the automotive because there wasn't enough clarification at the time that gentleman to my right had brought up. So, in order for it to pass, we had to remove that language. So, I understand reapplying, but I'm just trying to get a basis of, instead of bouncing around to each board and everybody bouncing me back and forth, is trying to get a clear basis of where do we go from here as a business? Because it's a lot of time on your end, my time, I just want to meet, my, my final goal is to operate a business here and meet my customers' needs. And I understand from my own investigation on these types of licensing, it's, it's, it's just not really great when it comes to the RV side of it, it's just too vague. Everything's geared towards the automotive car repair, which we are not. But it's the closest we have when it comes to the resale, because they leave it up to the individual towns to create that licensing. And right now, presently in this town, we are the only RV dealer, and as far as I know, the only one that's ever existed in this town. So, there is no, I guess we're kind of creating these treadwaters at this point. So, it's kind of non-conforming to what's pre-existing.
I, I disagree. All you had to do was to apply to the zoning board of appeals to sell motorized vehicles, regardless if they're RVs or trailers or whatever. But you applied for trailer sales only.
Sure.
And that's, you caused your own problem.
Not knowing, this is all new to me, so-
Well, you would have ran us-
Yeah, and in our, in our defense, we weren't giving you the runaround. I was here for quite a few meetings-
Sure.
...that you didn't have all the materials you needed.
Learning, yeah.
Yeah, you, you described it as a learning process for yourself.
Absolutely.
So, it wasn't us giving you the runaround.
Oh, I'm not saying it is, but-
You did, you just said, you were giving the runaround.
I apologize. There, there was other things that were going on through the whole process of getting open that-
Yeah.
-wasn't related to just you guys.
We weren't giving you the runaround.
Right, it's other things, sorry about that.
Good to hear.
Misspoke.
And I don't, I don't have my zoning book in front of me, but-
Sure.
-it's pretty, you can go in and look, right, it's online. Could use my phone, woman.
Sure, sure.
Is that, do you have it, is that it, Dick?
So, if we reapply for the vehicle identity part of it-
We find that section.
Because what we'll have to do is clarify, what Kip brought up is, is this oil-water separator thing, because that stuff I'm not putting in. It's not our focus, so we'd have to figure out, you know, what to do there. Because those are expensive as heck, we don't have it.
Yeah, it's a repair shop.
That's how close as we are to it.
I'm a little uncomfortable having us decide what businesses go into places, Kip, I'll be honest with you. I don't, to me, is, I look at the zoning bylaws, you know, you're, you're making us decide what goes in where. I mean, I think we can look at the zoning laws, we'll look at the zoning laws, does it fit or not?
Right.
But for us to come in here and say, well, you know, gee, your business goes in here and your business doesn't, is that what we're going to be doing?
No.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that, if that's what we decide to do, but I don't, in my reading, the bylaws doesn't give us the right to do that.
Well, it does. What the by, yeah, with that bylaw, when it says special permit, what that requires is an individual, regardless of it, if, in our bylaws of that zoning chart, it requires a special permit, they come in here and it's up to your board to look and see how it fits in with the neighborhood and stuff like that. There are certain aspects of that that do belong with the planning board, as far as site plan review, the building and stuff like that, but it's the zoning board of appeals job to see if it's a proper fit in that part of the town.
So, in other words, if a person's, person's running a business somewhere without a permit, then we have the right to shut them down, is that what you're saying?
Well, if it was either illegal, or if the business was there prior to zoning or something, I, there's a lot of different things, but yes, if somebody, if somebody just starts running a business out of their house, yes, you do.
The, there is no listing that I can find, the zoning bylaws for automobile sales or motor vehicle sales.
Okay.
Okay? The closest we got to this is retail sales of rental, with or, with or without outside displays, with a building of four thousand square feet or less, and then buildings of greater than four thousand up to thirty thousand. So-
And we're on the west side.
As far as issuing the license and clarifying the license, I hate to tell you this, but I think it's the Board of Selectmen's responsibility.
Oh, it is our responsibility for the license.
And I don't think anything we say here can overrule that. I think if, if you want to let him have six cars and six motor homes, or ten and two, or nine and three, I think that's up to the Selectmen to regulate that. I don't see anything in here in the bylaw. I think he came in here before for the retail sales, with or without displays.
Correct. So, that sounds like the clarification we're looking for, then.
Doesn't-
Not really.
No?
It's not clarified in here.
Because the building, the building's not capable of dealing with the repairs, and part of having a Class II license is you have to have a facility. Now, if you're going to outsource that somehow-
Correct.
-I don't understand that, so I, I just, I need to look into that.
What if, what if, being that we know that we can do a restriction, is we put in the restriction that the repairs, mechanical repairs to a motor home or motorized vehicle is off-site?
I can't speak to that tonight until I-
No, I know.
But when I, when I, I know I read the regulations, you know, from the, the-
I-
-the state, it required that the facility had to handle the repairs.
Yeah, because when I worked at, years ago, at an RV facility, we did not do oil changes. We did not do brake jobs. And it's a pretty well-known facility in this area, very large scale at this point. I know we did air conditioning and things like that on the motorized vehicle side of it, but as for major mechanical, we didn't do, we outsourced that. Front-end alignment, sure, but in a shop like us, we're not doing that kind of thing.
But see, that's part of the problem, and that's why our zoning's like that, is because, you know, we don't have anybody that's going to go in there every day and know if he's just changing tires or changing oils or, you know, we don't know that. So, we have to make sure that it's set up for anything related to repairing motor vehicles, and that's, that's kind of what I understood the state rules to be, so.
I'm going to tell you what I think here, briefly. I don't see where selling motor vehicles comes under the jurisdiction here. I believe that falls under jurisdiction of Board of Selectmen for issuing that license. I believe the building for retail sales is allowed, and retail sales, meaning, I would say, meaning, I'm going to interpret as meaning, trailers or whatever, cars, motor homes, whatever. I think it's up to the Board of Selectmen to regulate that, and it would, if I was recommending something, and I'll ask the other board members in a second, I would recommend that the Selectmen get an opinion from town council on how to handle that. And if he needs to come back for whatever, I'd have the town council jump in on this and give an opinion. I think that's the only fair way to do it.
Yep.
I don't want to, I don't want to deny or give him anything that he's not entitled to. If he's entitled to it, I, he's entitled to it. And it just isn't in our, the way I read the regulations, it's just, the interpretation is difficult.
Well, there's a lot of, if you will, kind of gray areas, but-
Yeah. I think I'd like to dump it back to the Board of Selectmen and have the Board of Selectmen have town, town council research the repercussions. Now, if the town council comes back and says, he can, you can issue that license to him, then you need to regulate him, and then if he's going to do any repairs, he has to come back here for a special permit for motor vehicle repairs.
Right.
And I think that's Selectmen's-
Well, that's, that's the, the whole issue, and that's why I believe that's there, is because we don't, like I said, we, we don't have a, a police, if you will, to go out and see what he's actually doing in there. So, if we're going to issue a Class II license to a location for motor vehicles, we have to assume that those repairs are going to be there. How we go about making sure that that doesn't happen, I'm not sure.
Isn't that where the building inspector, he's the enforcer?
I think that's, I think that's what happens is, you get the list of the regulations that he has to meet for that, like the oil-water separator. You get that regulation, and for fire prevention, you get that regulation in place and have the building inspector enforce that-
Right, but I-
-to start with.
The, the state regulations that, you know, the Board of Selectmen have to, you know, go by to issue a license, that's where this whole thing about the repair business came into place.
So, I, I think it needs to be dumped back to the Selectmen. Selectmen decide, you're going to give you a license if subject to this, you know, this is what you got to do, specifically, get the town council to say, yes, he's got to comply to this stuff.
Well, the question that I'll ask the town council is, and I'll-
I think that's where it needs to go, Kip.
Is to look back at the state regulations and say to the council, to the town council that, you know, the situation is this, the state regulations require the repairs to be made, you know, by the applicant. The applicant's saying that he's not going to do that, he's going to farm it out. What assurance do we have that it's not going to take place? And if it does, then what do we have to Lake Tisana once we've issued that license?
It's hard to cherry pick what you're going to do and not do.
Yeah.
Right from putting a bulb in for somebody to changing their oil.
Yeah.
And like you mentioned, there's no police force out there watching what people are doing.
Well, I think it requires-
So, it has to be all enveloping.
I think it inquires things like explosion-proof lighting and-
Oh, it requires a lot.
Hot work areas.
Hot work permit and all that stuff.
It's just like a paint booth. You have to have a lot of stuff, and the state has their own inspectors that will do surprise inspections even now, as a shop that we are now.
Certainly want to give them as much time to discuss this as you want, but my opinion is that we should dump it back to the Board of Selectmen for clarification, because this is only, this is an informal hearing.
True.
Anybody else?
I agree.
I agree, I agree.
Okay.
So, make a motion, Bernie?
Motion that we move it back to the Selectmen?
For clarification with town council.
Second.
Yes, 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 yes.
Sounds like a plan.
Back to, back to the Selectmen. That's what you get the big bucks for, Kip.
That's okay.
It just doesn't, it really doesn't fit our bylaws.
Well, that's what we need to know, because we're just all kind of lost.
Well, it fits our bylaws for retail sales, but that's about it. So, being, there being no other business, I hear a motion to adjourn.
They make the motion to adjourn. Do I hear a second?
I think-
All in favor?
One of the things is, is because of the statute, when it says what you need to have, that's why we did.
I understand, okay.